Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for January 25, 2022. It's a couple of minutes after 7:00 p.m. We are in meeting room four at Carver Town Hall. As usual, I recognize the presence of cable TV. We thank them for their efforts. And with us move with dispatch to our agenda for this evening. First item is the approval of meeting minutes for July 11, 2021. Before we do that, I want to express my appreciation for our clerk and her efforts. She is, as we all know, new, but is hit the ground running, and I think doing a great job herself. Now, after having recognized her efforts, and I know she's just going to get better and better with time, I ask if everybody's had an opportunity to review the draft minutes that were circulated amongst us some time ago.
Yes.
Does anybody have any changes, amendments, or modifications they'd like to make?
I'll be abstaining since I wasn't present at the meeting.
Okay. Everybody else good?
Yeah.
We have corrected a couple of typographical errors. Most importantly, the misspelling of Mr. Barrington's last name, which is very important. I think we get the names right. If everybody is okay, do I hear a motion to accept these minutes now as written?
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those minutes are accepted, and now part of the official record. I'm going to emphasize my discretion as chair and go directly to the continued case for this evening before we begin the evidence-taking on the new case. And so this is a continued public hearing, case number 131-4-3, the petitioner being Industrial Tower and Wireless LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 4600, 4660, and 4676, and sections following of the Carver Zoning bylaw for property located at Zero Federal Road in Carver. That's assessors map 131 lot 4-3, so as to construct a 150-foot monopole wireless telecommunications facility in the industrial A district. The special permit request is made due to the fact that the tower must be set back from public waves and residential uses, a distance of at least three times the height of the tower. Now, the board has acknowledged its receipt of various submissions in advance of tonight's hearing, and we appreciate having had the opportunity to review those submissions. And I'm pleased to report for the record that there appears to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there appears to be a meeting of the minds between the petitioner, the landowner, and Carver Public Safety. And I think we have all up here received those letter transmissions. Is that correct?
Yep.
Does anyone, before we get into further detail, have any questions about anything that's referenced in those letters, or are they all self-explanatory for everybody? Good. Everybody good? So just by way of an aside, the request for relief in this case was questioned from different quarters. There was an individual here representing the Save the Pine Barrens organization. That's when we first opened this meeting. I don't observe her to be present tonight. And we also had Public Safety for the town of Carver, who was also interested in this proposal. At my firm request, I'm glad that the parties, at least the petitioner and the landowner, which is AD Makepeace, and the town of Carver were able to get together and address those There were some interesting and challenging legal issues raised as a result of the requests made by the town of Carver Public Safety. This is a fairly recently developed area of the law. It's still developing. When exactions, as they're called, are asked for by a party, usually in this case, the Public Safety folks, from the petitioner, an exaction is an expectation or a request that certain benefits be afforded to it as a result of what is being requested by the petitioner. In this case, we know it to be a monopole. And so the case law, I would have to say, is still developing in this area. The courts seem to be indicating at this point that there has to be some sort of nexus or connection between what is being requested by the petitioner and what is being asked for by the Public Safety folks. And it's got to be roughly proportional. In other words, it can't be totally out of whack in favor of one party as opposed to the other. I'm dumbing this down as much as I can because I'm pretty dumb, and this is new. But this is, as I said, is a challenging area, and it may be useful for Public Safety going forward to know that Public Safety may not leverage its legitimate interest in mitigation to pursue governmental ends that lack, as I said, an essential nexus and rough proportionality to those impacts. So the question could be raised, well, what impact is this monopole going to have on the town of Carver? What burdens will it impose upon the town of Carver? So going forward, this case law is something that I think all parties need to be careful about adhering to. And having said that, and knowing now that the parties have been able to reach a meeting of the minds to get past some of these expectations that the town had, I think we can now move forward on the merits and ask if, first of all, the petitioners have anything further that they'd like to add. Once had a law professor told me, when you know you're getting what you think you want and things are going your way, don't say anything. Want to say anything?
All I was going to say was that on that topic, you do not have anything to add.
And Public Safety Chief Weston is here. Chief, anything further to add?
No, I appreciate your comments and thank you.
Okay. Obviously, as monopoles continue to come up, and we have quite a few now in Carver, and I don't know how many more we may get, but something to keep in mind.
Yes, sir.
And town council is always available to discuss this with you, I'm sure.
Sure.
I have not discussed this with town council, nor has anyone else up here, because I think we're pretty aware of what we need to be thinking about. Fortunately, we don't have to make a decision because you have an agreement, at least on the Public Safety stuff. Now, if the petitioner has nothing further to add, Public Safety has nothing further to add, let me inquire whether any member of the public who is here has anything that they'd like to add. I don't see anybody indicating that they would like to be heard. Let me throw this back to the members up here and inquire whether they have any questions, comments, or anything further at which they need or feel they need clarification.
Was there, has been any decision about putting a light on the top of the pole?
No. And that's something that I was going to address once we close the hearing and get into the condition.
Same.
And then we can have a little bit of a discussion on that. Yes, that's something that we're going to have to address. Anything else from anybody? Do I hear a motion to close the hearing? Motion to close.
Mr. Chair, do we need to enter this in the public hearing record?
It's already in the file.
Well, I didn't know we need to. Do they have a copy of it, or?
I will inquire. The board has received an undated letter from Ashawn Bogart, who, if recall, attended, I think, the last meeting, and he lives on Federal Road, I believe. Have you received a copy of this letter? Yes, Liz, I'm cramming here. Have you received a copy of this letter?
No, no.
Okay. Well, it is in the file, and I will give you this copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing now is closed, and I want to ask the board to consider the following Based upon the evidence received, both testimonial and documentary, the board finds that the adverse effects of the proposed wireless communications facility will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town of Carver or the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. And I emphasize, based upon all the evidence received, and we have received a lot, including the memo report of 84 pages, which we've all now had finally a chance to review. Everybody good on that finding? Do I hear a motion to accept that finding?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go to the decision. I would ask the board to consider the following decision. The board grants a special permit pursuant to its authority under sections 4600, 4660, and sections following, as well as 4676 and 4679 of the town of Carver bylaw. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, there are a number of conditions that I want to go through, and I think probably the best way to do this, obviously, is one by one, not taking a vote until the end. And I will ask for any discussion or commentary that the board feels that it would like to have after each one of these conditions is read. These are by no means an exclusive list, so if anybody else has anything they want to add when I'm done, feel free. Okay? Condition number one. The letters of AD Makepeace Company and the petitioner, Industrial Tower and Wireless, dated January 13, 2022, and January 14, 22, respectively, and the specific commitments outlined therein are incorporated by reference and become a part of the conditions to the grant of the special permit. Everybody understand the letters that I'm referencing?
Yep.
Okay, these letters for folks at home reference the agreement entered into among the landowner, the petitioner, and town of Carver Public Safety. These letters will become a part of this decision, and this decision will be conditioned upon it. Number two. Before the building permit and special permit is to issue, the petitioner, Industrial Tower and Wireless, AD Makepeace Company, and Carver Public Safety shall enter into a long-term lease agreement memorializing the terms of their agreement. Said agreement to be filed with the planning department within 30 days of the filing of this decision. Purpose here, obviously, is to get the parties together, have them sign jointly in agreement based upon these letters that I just referenced dated January 13, 2022, and January 14, 2022. And when that agreement is signed by everybody, it becomes part of the record of this case. That's number two. Number three.
Can we make comments? We'll wait till the end.
No, you can make comments.
I'd like to ask the petitioner if 30 days is enough time, or should it be 60?
I think 30 days is good.
30 days is good. Okay, that's fine.
Chief, you good? 30 days?
Sure.
You been through this before?
Yes, thank you.
Everybody else good? Number three. The 150-foot monopole may be located no closer than 347 feet from the 1973 county layout of Federal Road, per decree number 1478, and this constitutes relief of 103 feet, and no closer than 423 feet from the closest edge of the pavement of the road, which is relief of 27 feet. Now, remember our discussions? There are a couple of different measurements depending upon how this road was laid out versus how it eventually was constructed. Everybody good on that? Petitioners, you understand what I'm talking about, right? Number four. No more than .27 acres of trees are to be removed in order to gain access to the site. By way of background, the .27 figure came as a result of testimony received, I think, from your project person. Do we need to adjust the .27, or are we good?
Just take one quick look at that.
If you need a little wiggle, roll, let me know. This is the time.
How far did you say it was on the 450?
423 from the closest edge of the pavement of the road.
Did you do some quick calculations?
No more than .3 acres of trees are to be removed in order to gain access to the site. Number five. No earth removal will be undertaken at the site. Number six. I know Mr. Barrington is waiting for this one, and I know Ms. Clark will have some comments as well. No lighting will be required at the top of the tower.
I'm good.
Mr. Barrington?
I'm good. I just wanted to make sure that we had something addressed.
One way of the album.
Right. We have, again, a large amount of documentation of this, and part of it is a letter of no hazard from the Federal Aviation Administration. So no lighting will be required at the top of the tower. Number seven. Chief, if a gate is installed, it must be kept locked in a key provided to Public Safety. Number eight. If at any time Public Safety Communications Equipment experiences interference, usage of the facility will cease until said interference is corrected at the sole expense of the petitioner. Now, we hope that that won't be a problem.
That would be a problem for the carriers. You couldn't tell them to turn their network off.
If it's going to interfere with Public Safety, you better tell them to turn it off.
We don't have the power to tell Verizon or AT&amp;T to turn their equipment off.
Yeah, when you enter into a contract with them, a lease agreement with them, you have that power. You write it in.
I don't think it's acceptable.
Depends on who's there first. If Public Safety is there first, these guys cannot interfere with any existing tenant on the tower. Okay, so you're good with that? Okay.
Again, it's the time. Are you withdrawing your objection?
Who gets there first?
Are you withdrawing your objection?
Yeah.
It's easy. Just write it in. It's two sentences in the lease agreement. I don't expect that there's going to be any interference, but I think that the town has experienced this once before. I could be wrong, Chief. Maybe you can give some historical purview here, but was there another occasion where there was some interference that caused disruption in Public Safety transmissions?
Yes, that was a location in the center of town. It took quite a few months to diagnose that. It ended up coming from the light at the top of the tower, which was a strobe light at that time. The tower company changed that out to an LED light, which allowed our interference to go away, but it did.
Well, we're not going to have that issue go out here because there's going to be no light. So I think the chances of any interference are remote in this case, but we put it in anyway.
So if Public Safety comes first, any carrier would come after. If they caused interference to the Public Safety equipment, they would have to turn their equipment off.
I will read it again. If at any time Public Safety Communications Equipment experiences interference, usage of the facility will cease until said interference is corrected at the sole expense of the petitioner.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay.
But I just want to say, if a carrier is there first, AT&amp;T is there first, and Public Safety comes after and causes some sort of interference, then it would not apply. It's only whoever's there first. So if Public Safety gets on the tower first, and they have no problems, and a carrier comes and causes a problem, they would turn their equipment off.
I think this is a subject of negotiation between you folks and the carriers, and you can have additional conversation with Public Safety about this, but you're going to have to get together and memorialize this anyway.
Okay.
But I think this is pretty clear, and I don't want to parse it too carefully here. You folks seem to be getting along, and you're communicating well, and let's hope that this little question that you have can be resolved as well. I'm going to leave this condition in unless I hear something adverse from the board numbers. Again, for the record, if at any time Public Safety Communications Equipment experiences interference, usage of the facility will cease until said interference is corrected. It's the sole expense of the petitioner. Number nine. The board must be notified of any sale or assignment of leasehold interests prior to completion of said sale or assignment. The town must be advised at all times of the owner of the facility and/or leases relating to it. Any newly sold interest is bound by this decision. Number nine. Number 10. A performance bond must be filed with the planning department of the town of Carver before commencement of use, so as to guarantee removal of the subject wireless telecommunications facility within one year of cessation of use, per section 4674 of the bylaw. Number 11, subject to the plans of record. Word numbers. Questions, comments, or issues with any of these? Everybody's writing here. Ms. Clark, are you good?
Can I ask where the, what was the origin of the interference? Number eight.
That actually is something that we've put in previous decisions, including, I believe, our decision of April 10, 2014. On April 10, 2014, in our minutes of that date, when we arrived at a decision with regard to a wireless facility at Zero Federal Road, one of the things that we wrote in was if at any time Public Safety Communications Equipment is interfered with in any manner, usage of the tower shall cease and desist until said interference is corrected at the sole expense of the applicant.
This was the one they didn't know, right?
So we anticipated that eight years ago, seven and a half years ago, almost eight years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I have something. That was with AT&amp;T, a carrier, and I believe that I did see this condition in looking through some of the old decisions of the town, but I do believe that it was when carriers came to this board to be added to towers, which would maybe alleviate the issue that we were talking about, where will we negotiate with the carriers? If Public Safety isn't there first, then we're in a tough position because Public Safety isn't there, so how are we going to understand if it was someone that isn't there?
Chief, you going to get there first?
I'll do my best. I think the concern is it's too broad of a statement. If we had four carriers on the tower, and one carrier caused an issue for the Public Safety, you're telling all the carriers to have to turn their networks off?
We're not going to know which carrier it was that's causing interference.
Which in itself would be a Public Safety issue. I think the chief could agree with that.
So unless the board feels that it wants to amend that particular condition, I'm inclined to stick with it and have the three of you work this out.
I guess I would ask, how would you like to see that worked out?
I think, I think. I'd like to see you go on first.
Again, there's reasons why that might not happen, just for monetary reasons with the town and so forth, but obviously, we'd like to try, but that comes with time. I think myself and the applicant could certainly sit down and come up with some wording that would make sure that they would be obliged to work with us on the interference, you know, and the ownership should be on them to correct the interference. But I think there's a systematic approach that could be taken to how we would get there. So I think if you'd give us a little leeway, we could probably work that through a little bit.
So what kind of leeway would you like to see in the language? Again, the language says, if at any time Public Safety Communications Equipment experiences interference, usage of the facility will cease until said interference is corrected at the sole expense of the petitioner.
I think we would respectfully ask that you remove that condition and then get a part of a license agreement with the town and with Public Safety.
I'm not inclined to remove that. That's just speaking for myself. You're out of way that this language works for you. You want an amendment to the language? I'm prepared to listen to it, as are all the other members up here. Counselor, you have some suggestions on a language? Or we can suspend for a little bit. We could do a confab out the hallway, and then we can come back into session and have this addressed on the correction.
That sounds good.
You want to go outside?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
All right, before you go, does anyone have anything else that they want to say with regard to any of these conditions? Are you all good? Are there any other conditions that people want to consider? Let's see, nobody else wants to consider anything. So I think we're good on all 11 of these conditions, but for my number eight, and we're going to work on language that's mutually acceptable. So I invite you all to go out the hallway, and we will open the hearing now. When you come back, just give me a high sign. We'll suspend and get this taken care of. Thank you. All right, our new hearing for this evening. It's public hearing, case number 96-16-0R. The petitioner is Nancy Rico, which one is Nancy Rico? Requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 2252, 5220, and 5300, and sections following in the Carver Zoning bylaw for a property located at 145 South Main Street, Unit 4B in Carver, Massachusetts, assessors map 96 lot 16-0R, for the purpose of operating a driving school. to include classes as well as on-road driving instructions. You can sit. In the general business district. Now... This is out where the, is it the Little Red Smokehouse?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't that?
That Little Red Smokehouse, yeah.
And I think we all have a pretty good sense as to what you want to do. You wrote it out in your application as well. Do you understand why it is that you were asked to come before us for zoning relief? Was this explained to you well?
Yes, yes. Educational purposes, it flew out of the realm of the area.
Yes, this is in the general business district, this property. And we have a table of uses in our zoning bylaws. And it specifies with some detail what's allowed in each of our districts, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever. And this one is challenging to... In very different ways than the previous one was, but still challenging nonetheless. And let me explain before you get into the details of what your school is projected to be with special attention hopefully paid by the board members. Section 2230 of the Use and Regulation Table, page 5, at the very bottom, states that because this is a non-exempt educational use, meaning for profit, that in the general business district, the way I read this, is that this activity is not allowed. It's an excluded or prohibited use in this area. So we are now faced with a situation where we're being asked to give you zoning relief in an area where we're told we shouldn't be given. It's prohibited. So again, before we get into the details of what you want to do, we, it seems to me, have to decide whether we have the authority to grant this relief. Now, section 2252, word numbers, 2252, it speaks of non-conforming uses. The Board of Appeals, it says, may award a special permit to change a non-conforming use. But that use, which is non-conforming, has to exist before the pertinent bylaws have been passed and accepted. Now, I was able to get some records sent over to me about when this plaza out there was constructed. It appears to be from the late 80s.
1988?
1987, 1988, yes. Were these bylaws in effect at that time?
No.
They were not in?
They were not.
Okay, so this is a non-conforming use. This could be construed to be a non-conforming use. So if it is a non-conforming use, 2252 may very well apply, that we can award a special permit to change a non-conforming use in accordance with this section. Only if we determine that such a change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So, Ms. Clark, can you help me a little bit with this?
Sure.
Do we have the authority here?
I believe we do.
Can you explain to me why you think that?
It, well, it's a strip plaza, a strip mall, right? It was previous, it was a previous use.
Was there a yoga studio or something?
Yoga studio, yeah, yes. A yoga studio, someone who gave classes. It was probably non-exempt as well. Up to the discretion of the building commissioner, whether they send cases here or not. I think in this case, because it was built under the 1980 bylaws, we changed our bylaws in 1992, which would have included this. So my guess would be that at the time, that was a, we probably had a highway commercial or probably called Highway business district. And I think in this instance, and I know we've done this for the Shaw's, uh, Templeland Farms Plaza across the street. Same deal, different school type thing.
Different use since then now?
Yeah, different use. It was, I think at that time, it was a pool storage, and they converted it to a tanning salon? I don't remember. But that came through as for the same thing. So my feeling is that we would have the authority to grant this under 2252.
Because our bylaws now, the ones under which we operate, were passed in, or accepted in 1992.
1992.
So, this was zoned back in approximately 1987?
It was built in 1987. The zoning book I worked from had been done in 1980. And I think there might be a copy of it up in the attic.
This attic?
That attic. I know my attic doesn't have that before.
So what year did you say the plaza was built?
1988.
1988.
And I did go through the registry records, and there wasn't even a planning board decision on it.
This is what the folks in the planning department-
So this is what was in the file?
Yes. So built in 88, our bylaws now were accepted in 1992, so this would be... Yeah, grandfathered as a non-conforming use.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
That's what the entire plaza was.
How long has that space been vacant, if you're looking at?
Uh, 2019, February.
Remember, we issued a variance, a special permit for the sandwich shop that created... Pancakes?
No, not that one, it's a different one.
No, this was the space where, um-
We gave the liquor license, so.
Yeah, Little Red Smokehouse. It was a sandwich shop, and they wanted to serve beer.
Okay. Ms. Clark is through this. I would ask, um... Ms. Rico to address us and tell us a little bit about what they'd like to do over there.
Well, our driving school, the-
You may.
Thank you, if you can hear me. Our driving school only does one class a month, 30 hours a month, and that's not every month. What we're looking at doing is school vacations. So the week of April vacation, when school lets out in June, July, August, and then come around Christmas time. It's Monday through Friday, one week, that's it. The students get dropped off, picked up. So there's not, you know, a lot of traffic, and they're not staying there, you know, not a lot of cars. We're probably averaging maybe 15 students a month. Probably not even that for a while until we get up and get going here. We are thinking about doing a night class possibly every other month, because we have a school in Plymouth that's been doing pretty good. So like September, October, November, every other month, we'll do one month nightly in Plymouth, one month nightly in Carver. But I really don't think we're going to be that intrusive to the area. I think we're actually going to bring some business in. You know, the kids want to get something to eat at lunchtime. Parents pick them up or drop them off, now they're going to go home, so they might do takeout for supper and bring it home. I think it'd be a good cooperation.
Let me, I made some notes. Tell me if I got this correct. These came off of your application. If anything has changed, please let us know. You're going to do on-road driving instructions as well as classroom, is that true?
Yes.
And classes would be conducted for approximately one week, once per month, about six hours per week, approximately seven months out of the year.
Um, well, that's the school vacation, so you're talking February, April.
So you're adding up the weeks.
Yeah, 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 and then every other month.
So how many months should I say you're going to be operating?
Uh, eight, maybe eight months?
Approximately eight.
Yeah, approximately eight months to start. Eight, eight tops, yeah, because, let me see, we've got February, April, June, July, August.
We'll say approximately eight.
That's six, there's six right there. So, yeah, no more than eight.
Classes would be limited to how many students?
Approximately 15.
No more than 15?
15, 20 if we're doing really good. If we really get up there.
Classes are usually 20, 25.
Talk to me about parking.
Parking, drop off, and pickup. As far as when they do their lessons, generally, we pick them up at the high school or we pick them up at home. If they're too far out, you know, we might say, hey, can you meet me outside the school? Because we're wasting too much time getting from house to house.
You're not going to allow anybody to park there waiting for their kid, right?
No.
Their parents don't even do that at the other school. They usually just take off and come back, because it's only an hour.
Was there a preschool in this plaza before?
Yes, there was, yeah. Little Crusader.
So that's what I was able to glean from your application, right? Do you have anything else that you want to tell us? When are you looking to start?
Uh, well, we're not going to get everything done by February, because if we do get your approval, then I have to go to the R M V, and they've got to come out and do an inspection. They did a pre-inspection, and they said, yes, it looks good. You just need to add a handle at the bathroom, change the door handles to the latch type for handicap accessibility. But those are minor little things that can be done in no time. But they have to come back and give us the official word, which probably will be lethal.
What else would you like to say?
I think that's good.
Board members? How many instructors will be on site?
Uh, at any one time, there are three of us, but they're usually not three at once, one, maybe two. I do the classes myself, and sometimes I have a helper.
I do most of it, I have them.
Hey, I do them.
You have good insurance?
It's half day.
It's half day.
What are the hours?
If it's the one week, it can run anywhere from 8:30 to 2:30, or we like to do a 9:00 to 3:30.
What about night classes?
Night classes, um, 5:00 to 8:15.
So closing down shop at 8:30, everybody out at 8:30?
Yeah, they lock the door, gone. There's no, you know, worry about closing up.
So 5:00 to 8:30 in the evening? And what are your daytime?
Anywhere from 8:30 to 3:30.
And is it going to remain open between 3:30 and 5?
Uh, no, the only thing, if we're out driving and we need to pick stuff, that's-
But not holding classes for that?
No, no.
What about in the summertime? Would it be the same type of hours?
The same thing, one week, June, July, and August, and that's it.
So one week of classes, and then they do their driving hours?
Yes.
Trying to remember.
So they have the option of picking a week in June, or a week in July, or a week in August?
Yes, yes.
So classes still would be conducted just for one week per?
Session.
Per month?
One week a month, that's it, yep. Unless, I'm sorry, unless it's evening class, that takes two weeks, because it's going to be 30 hours.
How many parking spaces come with the units that you're working at?
Pickup, drop off, you know, it is, there's a lot in the back. We can ask them to go off to the side. There's two right in front of us. It's, like you said, it's just a pickup and a drop off. The other, they pull in in the morning, boom, they're out. So there's really no time sitting there all. If they come to pick them up at the end of class, they might sit maybe 10 minutes if they're early, but we can ask them, look, just don't come any more than five minutes, and their class is over.
And I'm really thinking about the traffic going in and out of their 20 cars, picking up their kids. And I don't know what else is in the plaza, but I'm, you know, I'm just thinking that amount of traffic within a very concentrated time. Is there any back area parking, or?
Yeah, they're way down the end. They're, we've come and gone quite a bit when the other places are open there, and there's always a big section off to the end that's empty. There's never anybody parked. I mean, it's not busy, Little Red Smokehouse is closed. There's numerous offices in there that aren't closed, so there's really not-
Is the daycare center open?
No.
I think there's a total of like four things. There's a vape shop, there's a groomer, and a seafood place.
A seafood, yeah, and the insurance at the end. There's a few empty spots in there.
Are there any major changes that need to happen to that building?
No.
The interior?
No, just basically like the latch handles for the handicap accessibility, a bar in the bathroom for that. But minor little things like that, nothing major.
So the classes are once a week, about six hours a week for the day, for the day.
On the week when there's no school, yeah, the one week session.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
I'm a little confused. It's easy for me to tell.
I got it. So you run like the classroom portion one week a month? Is it like for 15 odd students?
Yeah.
They're all the same students, they come, they get all the 30 hours that they need to do before they hit their driving time, their hours driving time. So one week a month, she does classes, and then the other weeks, you're giving the individual students their hours?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, and we might not even come adult.
And the classes, there's six hours a week for the classes, right?
Six hours a week when there, when there isn't school, a school vacation, and that's the Monday through Friday. On months that there's regular school, no vacations, like January, March, May, that sort of thing, we could have night classes, but even those are going to alternate between Plymouth and Carver, so they're not going to be every month.
Yep.
It has to be 30 hours.
And then do you park the cars that you use for road driving? You use your-
Yep.
They don't have like a fleet of little-
No, they won't be stored here.
Yeah, not totally.
Okay, you drive them and they go home, right?
Yep.
I guess the bottom line here is it could be open for roughly eight months out of the year.
Tops.
But not like consecutive months, it's not like you take-
No, because I-
I got, I got it.
Yeah, it's too much for me, you know, every month, and so.
Mr. Casey?
I'm, uh, I'm very comfortable. I think it's a good addition. That particular plaza has turned over a number of times. The area is in the name. As far as we get, because the main uses, you know, after you've got your location, as you said years before, there's a number of parking places well beyond us, so it'll never be a problem.
No, I don't think so.
But we should have.
Thank you.
We'll do it so we don't have to worry.
Do we have a driving school in Carver right now?
No, no.
Mr. Barrington?
All my questions have been answered.
Ms. Clark?
Okay. Okay.
Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved?
Backed in.
Going to be any change in size to the interior of this space?
No, it's one unit.
As is?
Yes.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? I would ask that the board consider the following finding. That a special permit to allow this non-conforming use at this location is appropriate because we determine that the change or extension of that non-conforming use, and this is really a change, not an extension, as we just went over, shall and is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Again, we're changing from one previous non-conforming use to another. This is grandfathered in as our historian vice chair has indicated. So this was at one point in time in Carver allowed, not under the current regs, but you're grandfathered, so under 2252. We can find that this is a non-conforming use which is changing from one non-conforming use to another and it's less detrimental than the previous non-conforming uses. Which involved all different kinds of things. Yoga studios and preschools and restaurants and all kinds of stuff. All in favor of granting or making the finding that this is a change from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental and it's grandfathered in under the bylaws?
Should we make a motion?
Yeah, that's, I'm asking that this find
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the decision should be to grant the requested relief for operating a driving school in the general business district per 2252. Anybody want to add to that or are we all good with that?
Okay.
Good.
Yeah? Somebody want to make the motion?
So moved.
Mr. Casey has the second. All in favor?
Aye.
So you get your relief as requested. This is a special permit that will be granted to you.
Thank you.
Per 2252. Okay, and you grandfathered in because it was a different rule back in the day.
Thank you so much.
Okay?
We won't be sorry. We're going to make Pablo proud.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Come talk to me about insurance and whatnot.
Hope to go this way.
Driving may be excellent, but
We have to ask you to act as an advisor.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Okay, so I'll get that written up and a draft circulated. It's upside down. I'll get that decision written up and a draft circulated to the board. Okay, good. Now we go back to the first case on the agenda for this evening. There was a question about my condition number eight. And so the parties have gone outside and I heard them talking. I couldn't hear what you were saying. And so do we have some language that you want to propose to us that hopefully is by agreement?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we would like to propose that condition eight reads, "Upon notification from Carver Public Safety of interference identified at the site, industrial has an obligation to promptly work with Carver Public Safety to diagnose and remedy the interference at no cost to Carver Public Safety."
That, per your agreement? Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board members?
I'm satisfied.
Satisfied? Counsel, can you email me that language?
Yes, I don't know that I have your email address, so I'll get that. And yes, we actually also would like to make a request for condition two that came up talking out there as well, just based on our timeline and also the chief's timeline. We're hoping that that condition for the long-term lease could be prior to the building permit as opposed to 30 days of this decision. Then that would be a better timeline for all of us and we would certainly get it in before the building permit.
So before the billing permit, special permit is to issue the petitioner, make peace, and Carver Public Safety shall enter into a long-term lease agreement memorializing the terms of their agreement and set agreement to be filed with the planning department. I had suggested within 30 days. You want that changed to what?
Is it within 30 days of, so it was 30 days of this decision?
Within 30 days of filing of this decision.
I would say, I would just say prior to the issuance of the building permit. Is that too broad?
No, I think that's
That would be a requirement to get the building permit, we have to file a copy of this with the planning department.
It would be prior to the issuance of the building permit, the yeah, I don't want to press the chief into another meeting.
No, the timeline just became too tight and this allows them to
So prior to the issuance of the billing permit and special permit?
No, building permit.
Just building permit? You folks will enter into that lease agreement. We'll leave out the section about 30 days. That work for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Email address? Carver, like I tell. Port, P-O-R-T, all in one word, And just send me over the language that you agreed on for number eight.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we now have all of these conditions laid out. We're not going to go through them again because I think we considered each and every one of them as I spoke of them. So does anybody have anything further that they'd like to add? Any other conditions that they'd like to consider? Do I hear a motion to accept these conditions with the changes referenced for the second one and number eight as well that the parties have gone out into the hallway and agreed upon?
Motion to accept.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're done. Seeing what a little cooperation can do. Thank you all for communicating and working together so that everybody walks away happy and so that the town of Carver's zoning regulations are adhered to as much as possible. This is a long case for everybody. A lot of material to review. So thank you for that, like we're here. And we look forward to a nice monopole out there and improved communication ability up there in that part of the town and for so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the staff send us the public opinion decision when it's written?
I will.
It'll be written and submitted to the town court. It starts the 20-day appeal period. So once it's done, once the appeal period has ended, whatever, 20 days from whenever this is filed with the town court, she'll call you to come get the original.
But as far as, so we don't get a copy ahead of that? Does he?
Okay. I mean, once it's filed with the town court, she can send it to you, I guess?
Right, okay.
I can just check with her.
If you could get that language over to me tomorrow?
I will, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we have any correspondence to review. The only new correspondence that came in related to the case that we were just on and that is available in the board file. So that's the only new correspondence I think I've received. Does anyone have any special concern or new business that they'd like to discuss at this point?
Do we check our date?
Yeah, our next meeting is February 23rd. February 23rd. We have right now three cases on the docket. Three, all new ones that present interesting issues. So I hope everybody can make it, everybody stay healthy. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Carver.